That's because it's going to be pretty.
Hey, there it is. All right, so I'm. That's clerk Callen.
That's. Sandersville.
Here.
So Hyson. Penny.
Yeah.
Oliver Townsend.
If.
Andrew.
Here.
Yes, sir.
Good. We should have our legislative meetings.
Let's leave this as we like on the United States of America. To be 12, 69. One chance to. Uh, how you're up on. Being good with this all. When the legislative agency has asked for.
Yes.
Well, we're gonna move on to the next, uh, item on the agenda. Uh, Mr. Payne has a couple of comments that he'd like to make regarding that topic.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, back of the agenda page, council, uh, item number one. Um, actually to recommend Nancy Gill for the. Planning Commission seat. Now, we still got two. I don't think it's by withdrawing the name. So we can't specifically say Nancy. Now, we could reword that, um, action to. To. You know, recommend a replacement or someone for the seat. But we can't, we can't just have one person there. I noticed.
Before you get any further, the Planning Commission considered all the names that were submitted. They discussed them, and this is their recommendation. That's how we've done it in the past. The council appoints the person recommended by the Planning Commission.
Wait, wait.
No, no, no.
We, we, we went through this about a year ago. Planning Commission, I don't say who was on their, their planning. No, they have no.
No, God finish. He's got the floor.
I've still got the floor down, okay? Let me just say this. Now, the, the planning commission is appointed and appointed, you know, they can recommend and we can consider it.
Right.
But there's still two names involved. Now, I'm, and you know, the vote can go either way. You know, it may or may not be, you know, something that would even change my mind. However. You've got another applicant. So it should be an action to amend, to recommend. A certain first. And then, you know. Recommend them.
Can I follow that up, Mr. Mayor?
Sure, sure.
So.
I, 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 I yield to council.
So, so does, so what we're talking about, just so the public understands, so. We have an opening. On the planning commission. And as we have an opening on the planning commission, one of the things we typically do is. As a planning commission, we recommend. If we want to have somebody in terms of who's we think is the most qualified. So, planning commission, we met. We talked and we thought Nancy Gill made the most sense. So we recommended Nancy Gill, our former mayor. As somebody who has both had, somebody who has had a lot of experience in the town. Um, doesn't have any legal actions against her, somebody who is. Able to kind of step into the position. And so all that to say. Um. Well suited for the job. So we, we simply wanted that.
Let me just say something. We, we looked at this last year as government service. And the, the town code, our metropolitan Virginia code says all power lies with the, their town council. And the, it's not a social public, somebody recommends. There is no other community that I know of that recommends this for their own, people for their own committees. This is independent and it should be an objective thing. And, and looking, looking at the town code, if you go to it, it says the town council. Decides on all, all appointees for those kind of things. So it's not something that the planning, the planning commission shouldn't even be a part of. I was on the planning commission and, and somebody showed up. That was around the committee. I had nothing to say about it. Our, our committee had nothing to say about it. It's just that they put it, the town council put it on. We dealt. And I think it's good that way too, because I think you don't have proneness, you don't have favoritism, and you also get some diversity. I think it's, I think it's the way to go instead of saying as a popularity conference. She's definitely qualified, probably the most qualified. But I don't think the planning commissions should be selecting their own members. It's not so.
We are selecting.
I know, but they're, they're, it's pre-selected.
Their suggestion.
They shouldn't.
That's what they're there for, to make recommendations.
That's not their job.
We're wrong. We can take their recommendation, but we really haven't voted on it.
We don't, we shouldn't even give it.
So.
So let's vote, let's.
Can we change that to?
Well, it, it's.
To recognize any applicant.
Well, one of the applicants that I know of is two years behind and their B poll taxes and I should disqualify them.
I don't, Mr. Mayor, I will not be in favor. I think it's fair. If you want to have a vote to say you want to remove it, I would advocate that we do not change what's on there.
Well, okay, and you do that. I, yeah, I really don't know how to answer that.
Well, if it comes up with a vote, you can certainly vote no.
No, but I, I, I said something to Elizabeth too. Uh, then it should just be. Replace a vacancy. That's all it should be on the agenda. Replace the vacancy.
In fairness to you guys, we will have a, so, I mean, I think there's two actions. One action, I think we could follow up on what. Um, Councilor Payne is saying is we could. But like you could make a motion to remove it. We could vote, I would vote no to remove it. That was good. And then, or we can, when we go to vote on her, you could vote no, you know, so there's, I think either one of those could be, I mean, it's a big mistake to correct me.
Well, even by virtue of the fact that, you know, I'm discussing a few points that I've seen in the agenda, there's still the opportunity. For a motion for approval and that kills it all, understand?
Yes.
Okay, so this, well, we can go that route. I just, you know, want to go on record as saying that I, I don't agree with, with. One name there. We, we just ought to keep it, you know. Affirmative. Now, Gorch, we could, he'll ask for a motion to approve the consent calendar. There'd be a first and a second. There'd be a vote. I may vote yes, I may vote no. But that'll kill it right there and then we just take off.
I think that makes sense.
Okay, my second point.
Hey, you make some good points.
My second point. Uh, compensation for mowing to Kevin quick. Now, Kevin volunteers and he, I don't believe he's asked for compensation.
Yes.
And I believe if he was offered it, he wouldn't take it. Um. I don't even know why that should be on there.
Because Councilor Hyson suggested that it be put on.
I get dragged into that too, I mean.
Okay, so if we could, if we could, um. If motion could be approved, the consent. Um, agenda has amended. What striking.
And amendment would be to remove the one for compensation from.
That's, well, that's one. And finally. Community service folks. That's two general area for me. Are we talking about members of the community? At large or we're talking about certain organizations?
Well, when we talk to it, we'll get into it. And if there's no vote involved or if it's tall.
Yeah.
So we'll just talk and then if there's something that needs to be voted on, we'll do that next month.
Well, I'm glad to have the opportunity to, you know, point these things out.
The only thing on here tonight for voting is the, the planning commission and the compensation thing and other than that, we're just talking about everything else.
Okay, well, I, I wanted to just fancy sees that there are some things. On this that I don't exactly agree with the way they'll, you know, word it or it shouldn't be on there. So, thank you.
That's, that's why I, I ask everybody to try to get anything in by the five o'clock on Thursday. So the, the thing to put, put together on Friday, you know, y'all have a chance to look at.
I looked at it. So. That's the, I didn't look at it.
Okay, so, um. Anybody else have anything to say? Then we'll.
You, you mentioned about the other thing with, uh, voting. I, I did want to vote on whether we get on the parking, whether we want to go forward with that. Or do we, I mean, just to investigate that further or to keep it as it is. Uh, that, that's. That's a vote too, I think.
Well, what now?
When you said there's, the only thing.
I mean, what are, what are you talking about?
Carryover on old topic, parking business requests. I, I do want to make a motion to, uh, this, this evening, uh, government service. If the council wants government service to take on, uh, regulations for, for, uh.
We don't need any regulation. We'll, we'll get on that. We're discussing, not voting on any, anything about parking law anyhow.
No, it's not, it's just about going forward with that, so.
Well, you certainly go forward with it. As a matter of fact, I have another vote about cheap communities. Don't go with the one I gave.
Well, that's one of the ideas. The other idea is to make a ordinance.
Yeah, you, you certainly.
Come up with suggestions.
I'm voting on it.
Right there.
Okay, so now, would anybody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I would like to make the motion, Mr. Mayor, that we approve the, the, the plan calendar as is.
And is there a second? So the consent calendar is not. Approved.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, have approved the consent calendar with, uh, the amendments or the adjustments that, uh, paid right forward.
And the adjustment was one to not.
No, just.
No, it was one compensation. We're gonna vote on planning permission button tonight.
But I, I did request that it be. I don't know if generic is the word, but we don't identify individuals. We have taken, we've. Recommendations from the planning commission and voted no before.
Yeah, exactly. You've got that option. You don't have to vote with somebody because they're the ones that put forward.
Well, there's two applicants. You know?
Well, as I say, the planning commission did their homework unless there's a recommendation. You don't have to vote for the person. You can vote against that person.
Okay.
So now maybe we have an approval of the amended agenda.
Can you go with the amendments that you want?
Pardon?
What is, eliminate compensation.
That's the only one that seems to be live right now.
Is there a motion for that approval? So, second.
Second.
And then you have further discussion. Now, vote on the paper.
Uh, I.
Close?
No.
What more I than those?
CAs there were.
This is a point where we have our public forums and those in the audience wish to speak to the council about any topic, just please come forward, state your name, and we can have about five minutes to do those. On load on us.
And I, like.
Yeah, just quick, I said, Miss Way Spencer, you got something to come from?
I don't mind going, no. I, it's really not on my, uh, thank you, council and mayor. It's not, my name is Swiss Marshall, uh, I'm just watching Cook Tavern on Jane and my wife, Kevin Marshall, those town on Jane. Uh, I'm here to request a reduction in, uh, food tax, meals tax. I think it's might be current around six months on six months, so maybe correct in six and a, six and a half. I'd like to plus to maybe just to buy. I understand the concern, whereas the, uh, the reduction in revenue for the town's hospital, where's that going to come from? And suggested, it was then suggested that if I could promise certain one here, I could, um, raise my net sales per year by roughly a million dollars, a recomендed for the reduction. Which I can blow the roof off of me and I can sit here and blow BS up on everyone and promise you the world, but if I raise my sales, just going to evaporate the sales of other food places around here. My actual perfect business. Uh, and I don't want to be there. Uh, I'm hoping. If we reduce the meals tax, it will cause more volume. If we go back to two thousand seventeen, I did a million somewhere fifty thousand dollars in sales in two thousand seventeen. Uh, and our prices were roughly half what they are, are making. Right now, we are forecasting to do a million two hundred thousand sales this year. That's roughly a half million dollars in sales, less than we were doing in two thousand seventeen. And our prices are double. So obviously our volume is lower. And I think some of the problem is I branded tavern on James as a, uh. Big city experience with small town prices to be buried again. And that seemed to work really well. And I think it also helped families, so when people, when people come here to have, we're not here to radio commercials, marketing expenses, the marketing that's planned. Money on to get people into Scottsville. I think they're not only coming to tavern, but they'll get tavern, buy gas and that's everything else that Scottsville has to offer. Uh. I feel like if I could ask town council just to maybe on short amount of time. Drop the meals tax, maybe one point five percent. And, and again, I'm not, or if I get a word, that's like, you know, worse than others, help that. That's only a dollar fifty or a hundred dollars of sales. I'm asking for a small sacrifice. Oh, I'm asking you or give me a chance to show you that possibly I can begin to market Scottsville as a. Better deal than, let's say, Charlottesville. I'm not saying anything wrong with Charlottesville. I want us to be more attractive. Than Charlottesville. That's all I'm asking. I've got a quarter million dollar offer on the table right now to sell the tavern on James. If I can't get my volume back up, and I think part of it is inflation, part of it is meals taxes. Uh, part of it is a whole lot of stuff. I'm just asking town Scottsville to help me. I won't make sacrifice. So I'm gonna cut your price and my food costs are going to be higher, my profits are nine, they're not there now, they're gonna really be bad. I want to bring volume back to the value. And the town Scottsville, the council and all, they want to cut the meals taxes. Honestly, as I walk out of this meeting, I don't really care. I've got a quarter million dollar offer on the table right now, sign, and I can walk away, quarter million dollars in my pocket, and y'all can figure out where y'all want the money from. Thank you, Russell, we pay. Eighty thousand dollars a year in meals taxes, maybe somewhere in that neighborhood. If I walk away from here, I promise you, the people want to buy it, not going to live for eighty thousand dollars a year in those taxes. It's going to go down, down, down. And that's if they're harmless. I don't know if these people can be honest. I've always been honest about having those taxes and turning them away. If I go away from here, I want to set up, there's a summer outside of Scottsville. What hand is not going to charge from the meals taxes? Deep, I'm, I'm gonna take, I'm gonna take. I'm gonna take whatever you like from Scottsville. I'm not even going on purpose. I don't want to, it's not a breath. I've got to survive. And it's, I'm not here to threaten anybody. I'm here to tell you how it is. And that quarter million dollar meal is still on cable. That guy's still, he's signing papers. I'm not talking to him until I talk to y'all. This has to be decided pretty quick. But I don't want to waste.
That's what I'm.
I love Scottsville.
That's what I was getting ready to move to. It can't be decided pretty quick because first of all. If the council decides they want to do something with the meals tax, you have to advertise, advertise it, have a public hearing. And then after the public hearing, you have to have a discussion with the folks. So it's, the least thing to be is too much down the road.
I have to make a decision pretty quick.
Well, it's not gonna happen. It's not gonna happen before too much, that's for sure, even if it happens.
I, I'll say y'all.
All right, well, appreciate you taking your time. Thank you for all you've done, but it's not one of those things that we can.
I haven't done anything. Scottsville's done this for me.
Yeah, okay.
I owe a lot to Scottsville.
All right, thank you for that, sir.
Thank you.
My sir. I really don't have a whole lot there to run up. So that we, oh, God, sorry, Kevin. I, I forgot you were going up there. I'm sorry.
I, I just, um. So just, there are a couple of things as far as like the. Um, the, the, you know, those square stuff, uh. And kind of the grass and stuff like that and things like that, you know, um. The whole, the whole point of us trying, the whole point of Ben and, and Jack, when trying to do that was to create something that did not create. Any additional. Stuff for the town's gospel and, and, and sort of create something that may bring some excitement to. Scottsville for one evening of a month and, you know, for five months and driving, make it something that would be, it feel. Different, shall we say. And, and that has worked well and, uh, you know. The whole, I, I guess one of the things I want to say is I just want to make sure that we're supporting. Ben and Jack, you know, you know, and they're never as well as the hospital can for their volunteering part of that. And, you know. I was talking to Ron and I know, know, now they're working, getting some stuff and they pulled it all together and we're very appreciative of that. So thank you so much of.
Jesus, like.
I thought you were getting all this stuff, though.
Well, I told you.
But, 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 but what I was going to say, the reason I'm bringing it up is. When you're in a, in a volunteering situation, sometimes it's like you don't always. The difficulty sometimes takes the excitement out of it for folks. And all I'm saying is, is they're fine. But I'm just saying as far as in future things, if we're doing stuff, it has been a pet peeve of mine is that, you know, it, it, we need to support those things. And if, if you support them. In some fashion, it's not like going into a store, but when people are volunteering at times, you're doing stuff and sort of like an implicit kind of sometimes, but, but. Just, all I'm going to say is keep that in, in the back of your mind, just, you know, as far as in the future and supporting it, because it's not something that comes at a cost. You know, it's something where we just. If people have ideas and are willing to take off, they just do it on their own and it's like food and stuff can do it. That's, that's all I was going to say on that. The other thing as far as talking about the, the, um. Mowing stuff. I mean, I know, I think we was talking to Ron earlier about it was the, the. Issues with that and I didn't know exactly what was going on. I guess I was just trying to get a feel. I didn't read the minutes, okay, but I, I had agreed to, I know that Jam was out of town and I was like, okay, I'll. We'll get the, 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 um. Thing cut down there. Don't worry about it. And we'll get it cut this week, you know, in order for that to look at what he's. Um, I was talking to my son earlier and he's home from college and I was like, I don't know what they're looking at, planning to do, but I don't mind. You know, I was like, you want to help. In some fashion and something. So I don't, I don't know if, I know it was a talk about mower and this and that. And I'm just like, well. He's college age. I mean, he, he might be willing. To do something if somebody, you know, if it was something, I'd ask, I, I had high expectations. You know, I know Jam sometimes would say, gosh, you want to be like a country club. And yes, I do want to look like a country club. I mean, that's, that's where you do it. So my son went, just understand. So, you know, I protect him from. That, but I'm just going to say that's something you can put table if you want to put it on the table, if, if that's something that you all are going to start to push out and, and not have anybody, uh, take care of. Um, but, but I guess just going back in under my five minutes is probably, but just, you know, if you see Ben and Jack, then. Just say thank you for what they're doing because they don't, they just, they just kind of create something that's a little bit. Neat on Fridays. And, and here's the thing, I, I would tell each and every one. I don't do that stuff for any of you all up here. And no disrespect to any of you all. I don't volunteer my time for any of you. Please understand. I volunteer my time and you go down there on Friday, even we see all the people out there, the people in this community that are enjoying themselves. You know, getting a, you know, listening to music and stuff and, 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 you know, that's where you have to put your focus on because unfortunately, we're all not going to agree with this stuff. So I try to keep that out of. You know, out of, I just want people that come down there and we, and we've been getting a little crackle and. You know, what's going to hurt if they enjoy themselves for two hours driving night, that no cost technically. And I think maybe we're getting some meals tasks. I don't know if we're getting some that's in from the April weekend. That's all I'm.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Jeff. Anybody else? Well, let's go to this public forum. And I will just mention that, uh, I don't have anything much to add to what I said in the work session other than. Uh, on August fifth. Uh. Southern Development is going to have a production team in town to shoot videos and interview people that wish to be interviewed and. And develop a commercial to promote Scottsville for us and then give us the commercial to use anyway we want. So it's just. If you want, let me know by the end of the week if you want to be on the list of people to get interviewed. Uh, so we're going to try to interview businesses, boys and girls club, library. You know, and, uh, certainly any council people that want to show up. Let me, give me your name and I'll get you a time that they're gonna be doing that sort of things. Okay. Uh, staff, of course, I'll start with the town administrator.
Um, all right, so in your package of information, there's, I know I said lots, even though I wasn't, it was kind of out, but some of the things. Um. I did, anyway. Uh, but there's a volunteer applications. But, um, example, this is based upon the one that we've, the current one that we have. Um. I think that. Um, it may, for two of us to have a couple of different applications. One for this, one that's here is just for people that are going to help. Plant some flowers or pull some weeds or something general like that, not using any, um, lawn equipment, heavy equipment, anything like that. Um. So I just updated this one. And. Um, there's a. Also in your packet, it's several pages of, uh, the volunteer policies. And that is just, um. What we expect of our volunteers. For example, we got a personal conduct of representation that they, uh. Look the parts. Now, they don't get in the lead. Um. Trouble with our, you know, release or anything like that. Um, also last week, we talked about the virtual meetings and community policy and already to, um. Approve that. And so this is the. The policy in your packet. And on the last page, section six is, um. The resolution, so someone can, um, read that. And what else? Oh, I did, um, when I talked, um, to Bill Rester Day, then again with, um, mayor. I said that I had a letter that, um, perhaps. He would like some news or, you know, whatever template that you want to do, but I just made an example. So that's in your package. Um. And you're more than welcome to who said or not, but, um, anyways, that's included in there.
If I might not end on that, I think some letter like this is actually a good idea. So you're, are you thinking this was. Wow, people or we would give it to all the businesses? So we put it on cars or what? I'm thinking.
I. I was just providing a, the letter and I.
I did a bill like last week, a work session that went out in two thousand one, which asked everyone to be considerate of the parking situation. Don't park in front of businesses and leave the car there. All, all that sort of thing. Uh. Town administrator found another one and we were hoping that maybe the little committee.
Yeah, we.
Do letters to make something that's up to date and. Put it up to the current situation and then we'll mail it to them.
So if, if we have trouble parking, they should just move their car to Bill's house.
Well, yeah, maybe we keep coming out of government shows, maybe not, but it's a letter. I can see this one, but I think that's the way the council wants to go with statute eleven. I think that's the big here to start and just.
You know, waste a bunch of time and effort developing, uh, ordinance that can't be enforced. And we can't enforce an ordinance unless we hire someone to enforce it. Can't have our town police officers running around writing parking tickets unless it's a solid. In the whole parking zone or in, in the handicap, it's ones that they really shouldn't be focusing on. You just throw cars, maybe been there for two hours and no way to confirm whether it has a block. You can't sell the two hour limit, but you have somebody that's specifically going to go around. And since you told it's not far a fire, then the worst is going to have to be the award of these illnesses. So with that being, we can't fill up a ordinance, it's going to hold up in court.
Um, if I may, I believe. That, uh, as far as the police department goes, the, uh, police department can write a ticket for. Like just handicap and by hybrid thing. They're not, they don't have to have any type of. You know, uh, ordinance for that. Those are two things that they can go ahead of. Yeah, they can, if you block a hydrant and, or handicap, they can write it up.
But it's. Those are the, those brands, if you know, people park there in those spots and aren't supposed to be issued, get the ticket. But if they, uh. Comes in, maybe somebody has, uh, you know, got called away and had to leave the car there for a little bit, two hours hanging, but justify getting them a ticket if you can't prove they were there for two hours. And you actually have to have a meter for somebody.
I thought also that, that zoning administrator should have figured out that force of, um, like, at least even from the force of, had the zoning minister been saying. This is, and we don't even know what the, the ordinances or what the domain is, but that was when I heard that she could actually let, remind people that. This is, they can't park there because of the zoning ordinance. So I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard.
I will, I will repeat that.
Yeah, come, come to our meeting and talk about that and come up with that. But I like, I like starting with the letter. Uh, I'll, I'll give that to, uh, and maybe we could reply that if this doesn't work, that we'll go to a more strict, uh. Protocols.
Do we have any ordinances? Um. In the faculty, say in the books, uh, that need to be deleted? If so, we should. If so, we should.
Most of the parking ordinances. Will focus more on residential than commercial parking.
Okay.
And the numbers of parking spaces you have, if you have a certain number of employees or a certain number of square feet in your business. And if you have to have a handicap place or if you have to have off off street parking, it's a lot of stuff that doesn't. You apply here. And maybe it would be good if your committee goes through all the parking ordinances and comes up with a list of those we think we don't need.
At least I say that is because there was uh, one business that had a handful of old ordinances they obtained somewhere. And I didn't understand that.
And as I told that business, we were thinking the same one, there's an. An ordinance that says, a zoning ordinance that says some of these ordinance cannot be fully complied with in the historic district. So you got an order saying you have to do this, and you got an order saying we don't really have to do that.
Okay.
It's kind of, kind of crazy.
I am starting to review the ordinances that we have. Um, to make sure that they comply with um today's standards or Virginia's. Um, requirements because the ordinance has changed, you know, over time and there's updates. But it's a long process to read, you know, what we have and then compare it. But I have.
Let let's say that and look something that's common sense. I think most people will cooperate if you, you know, look for something that's that's good for our businesses.
But like they just said, like some of them, there's ordinances, but then once we get in the historic district, they they're not applicable to us.
Alright, uh, Assistant, I'm gonna pass Assistant Treasurer, if you have a.
Bro.
Oh, did you have more?
We were still, we were still talking about the volunteer.
Oh, okay, we're still talking about.
We got off on the ordinances. Okay, it's um. Uh, the first, uh, number one, building access to supervise policies, access requirements. And it reads volunteers may only enter town facilities during regular business hours. When at least one town employee is present and available for supervision. Jam is a town employee. And I found out the other day, Amelie's town employee. Um, we ought to word that somehow that could say. Mayor, town administrator, and town clerk, or however you wanna do it, that the simple fact that a town employee, um. Doesn't say much about how they can supervise. I'm just asking, you know, full accountability there. Is that too much to ask?
No, um, we had a long discussion this morning about uh, about this topic and uh. Volunteers that don't need to be in the building all the time. So we're working, working on that.
Well.
Can't say too much more about it right now, but.
Yeah, well, whenever, are we gonna approve this?
We're not, no, we're not.
Okay.
It's just some guidelines and uh, you know, this, take this form. That that's in the packet and and look over it in the next work session, mark it up and 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 fix it up like you want it.
Okay.
You know, that's your.
So if we wanted to add or take away anything from it, would that have to be something we do at the uh, next session, not the work session?
Take this document, take this form, sit down when you're not doing anything and. And look over and say, well, this doesn't apply, or maybe we now need to add this and then we'll, we'll get one that everybody's agreeable with. The next work session, then we can move on.
Okay.
On that we use right now is online.
Okay, and one other thing, and this is just what everybody's told me, go home, do the homework and come back. Um, you can, you can look at this too. I see the cert program is on here. That's the, the Department of Homeland Security, um. Uh, administers, FEMA, FEMA administers, cert. So it's federal, it's all federal. We have a cert program that started like last year and, um. We don't sponsor them. We didn't vote to sponsor them. They are here because, you know, permission was asked. If they could start this program in the community, it was granted. And I have them, it's not up to the town to approve for this program. So I'd like to see that taken off. Go and go to the cert website. And you'll see the rules there and I think I'm in compliance.
Make sure you bring that up when we start. Town just like a part of like.
I also like that, you know, it was the parts of the D C N A I know too.
We're not gonna do anything but tonight, just take it home and and see and tailor it to what you're thinking she's doing. And then we'll get our heads together next month and we'll see if it's come up with a cozy. And a document that covers everything that needs to be covered. Doesn't cover things that don't need to be covered. Assistant Town Treasurer, do you have a, uh, any type of report for us?
Well, I talked to Doc Roller today, Robinson Farmer and Cox, which is our accountant. And we're getting in line for our field audit. Um, we're gonna be October first and second. They will be here to gather their information, get what they need and take it back. And then we should have. Probably guess about the middle of January, normally we get it back. Which it has some questions about Airbnb and so has Elizabeth, so I called them today. And it was an exercise in utility trying to get to someone. I'm trying to. Figure out, they sent me a check every month for the taxes. But I have no way to back into. Who's Airbnb it is, who's paying for, do I have business licenses, which I'm guessing I don't because I have. The two main Airbnb's out there, both are two years behind on business licenses. Um. So I need to figure out if they're renting them, if they're not, who's doing what. So I, they sent me a thing today that said. They upped our. Questions to a team, so they should be getting back to us in the next couple of days to see if we can get something to figure out. If we're getting paid the right amount. You know, as I said, who's Airbnb's are being used, who's aren't. So we, we should know that maybe, uh, I should know it by at least the work session. So we can kind of see where we're at with that. Um. The next meeting in August, start having minutes again, um, as it should be caught up, everything should be done. And we'll get our minutes and get our financials and everything ready to be looked at. They did the mold mediation yesterday downstairs. Um, they tore out quite a bit of. Clawed that closet is completely torn out and they put it back. They did. Keep the proposal from twenty nine hundred dollars, which they gave us a year and a half ago. So they were very good at keeping that same amount of money. The only problem is when they gave us the proposal, they didn't look at the floor. That's on the other part of that. Um, there's no barrier in between the creek and the the floor. So everything is rotted and molded over there. So that's another mold reason in the sound downstairs. They're gonna give me an estimate. Um, as soon as I get their estimate, I can get two other ones to figure out. What is going on down there and possibly, I mean, I know when I was in Ohio. They had grants and different things from the counties for restorative buildings. So we may be able to look at some type of grant out there to possibly get this building updated.
Be some kind of historic grants available.
Yes.
Being a historic building.
Exactly. So I mean, that may be enough to get the windows looked at. The, don't we have, still have one unit up there that's still on the air conditioning? You know, things like that, the floor down where that line was coming back to work. On that side of the building is waterlogged and it's gonna rot. So they're gonna have to, he said he would include that in the, in the proposal.
Well, if that rots, we lose the backstage area.
Yeah.
Because it won't, it's like will be safe.
Yeah, it won't. He said to make it right, they would have to. Take that carpet up down and sand it, scrub it, get that all scrubbed underneath. Put a, um, piece of, put the, uh, the vapor barrier in solution. So.
Did, we have a guarantee on the work we've done so far?
And we talked this morning about having Jam, it's 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 a minor. Thing we have to do, but it's a responsibility is once a month checking filters in everything in the building upstairs, downstairs. Um. Scan needs to, you know, be aware of your surroundings too and people have all things. And it's not rely on us to keep the whole building and, you know, obviously as a landlord. Which has no expectations for that. If you got a leak, come report it. Uh, something's not working, you know, and you can fix it yourself, fix it.
Well, you don't, you, you talk about the filters and the return.
Yeah.
And the returns.
That's why, that's why the boys and the girls club went down because the county does the maintenance on their, their. Uh, heating and air conditioning and they had never changed filters for like six months or so. There was a little clog with stuff went going through. I checked with them today and went over there and they're, they're working okay now. Uh, but it's the county's responsibility, their landlords, so.
So we. You don't have to go out and buy the most expensive filters, just change them once a month.
At least look at them once a month.
No, just change them once a month, you got it. That's, that's, I mean, I do that at home.
Well, well, I, I've done stuff before and I've worked, I use it, speaking of the filters and stuff. Sometimes the more expensive filters, they uh, float a machine down or whatever. Some, sometimes the best filter you can have is the one with the least restriction. Also, as far as doing a maintenance schedule, I mean, you know. You can't just do it month to month. You have to take in consideration if we have extremely hot month, like July or whatever. And the temperatures have been higher than normal, sometimes the equipment needs to be checked more than once a month. Same thing for the winter time. If it's extreme uh, cold, we need to have it checked. You just have to take into account the other factors.
I check mine once a week.
So I mean, you know, once a month. Bare minimum, but needs to be done more than once a month.
Also, I had a question, people wanting to pay for things online, um, which we currently don't have set up for yet. Uh, we have been taking some stuff through PayPal and especially for the uh, donations for the canal. It's pretty expensive. The fees are are terrible. It'd be, I mean. Yeah, through PayPal, it's like three point four nine percent. If they check out through PayPal, if we use a QR code. It's two point two nine percent plus the, plus a fixed fee. So. They had the one person donate a thousand dollars, it was the thirty dollar fee. To pay that online. So I'm gonna look at other platforms and I'm kind of, I'm gonna check around to see what some of the other. Uh, counties and towns do around here to see if we can get a better rate with someone else. And then we can set it up and get it on our website for payment.
You said paying for stuff.
Pay for um, donations or for their meals tax. Sometimes they'll come in and they won't have a chat and say, hey, can you take your credit card? Well, we can't, so I can't get them to pay for their meals tax through that, um. Bee pole, you know, a lot of people wanted to pay for the meat poles online. I couldn't do it because we didn't have the accommodation for it. So I'm hoping that we can possibly get that in effect before our next bee poles come into play. And then that way, it'll be a lot easier. Then they'll just have to send me the form, that's it.
Questions for the Assistant Treasurer? Must move as well as on, of course, on the boards, they are being, you think you. I've got, I've got one, I would appreciate maybe if you would look at, uh, I understand why I did it, but. Uh, they have to go to this fish market, put a rack in. And it's. Just rare. And it's, of course, I'll never prove by anybody, and I understand why. So it's kind of like a veins, this really stuff.
Yeah, I agree with that, to know that, but, but, yeah, it could be a. With handicap people.
Yeah.
Need to look at that. And the other thing there are two is. I don't, I don't think it's regular, they're bad too, but they they just take that down every day, I think, but that's not a sign though, but I guess there are a lot of them bad.
Uh, um, they. I mean, at least I can say if, if I just know, I'll talk to him, tell him, and then, yeah, he said something with his dad before the meeting Thursday. In August, I mean, hopefully I'll have some answers at that meeting.
Okay, appreciate that. Uh, Dan, anything else to plan?
Would you want me to repeat what I said last week, Mr. Bear?
I think everybody was hearing her report, so it's not unless you want to look at some new changes.
Now we're going to guess with the. Record of this and those.
Mr. Heisen. Uh. Well. Hang around just a little bit longer. I got, I need to talk to Ken, that we need to ask you a couple of questions or something.
Uh, I kind of said a minute, but I just kind of go over for everybody the uh, uh, go with service double two. Problem areas for improvement, the budget process and parking. Uh, and we're gonna try to continue working on the budget process, especially uh, since we're kind of the financial review committee in a way. Uh, we're looking at an organized budget process with a calendar schedule, thorough budget review, public hearings, provisions. Kind of get that in order so it's uh, so it's not last minute in the, improve the process. And we kind of talked about customer parking, so that, that's still on the agenda, but we think we can plan with that initially to just come up with a letter. The government service can look at that, uh, it's, I don't know if we need action on that, but it sounds like everybody's on board with the. Starting with a letter to, yeah, the, the residents, the, the owners. And the, uh, and the public in general, just to let them know that. There's custom park, park, parking is a priority and uh, and to not park on the street unless you're a customer. Basically.
Any questions for Mr. Heisen?
Yeah, uh, one, uh, you're gonna go ahead, uh, could y'all maybe send out a letter or something? To the businesses and let them know that the town council is aware that there is a parking, a parking issue or whatever. And it had been made known that, you know, if some of the business owners will find a better place to park, they can make uh, room for the customers. Let them, let, let the people know that we're aware that there's a problem, that the business owners could try to do something such as find a better place to park. We could revisit the issue in three or four months. I just don't think the parking is that much of a problem.
And it's, the loading is not a problem, but I think we need to just follow through with this and if we're gonna do this to try to do something that, that taking care of the businesses in our town. Yeah, we'll, we'll, I think a letter, we'll, we'll.
We're gonna get complaints from two, 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 two different businesses. That corrects, the only two businesses that are really complaining.
No, there's been other people complaining too, but the, but. We didn't take a survey, but there was a survey done by the Chamber of Commerce, which indicated there was some concern, so. I do think we need to try to at least try to address them, even if we can't sell them, at least we're addressing, so it's not just lost.
Yeah, but it's a good point. Emergency repair, this, any, you have any kind of.
No, I just wanted to mention the parks, uh, uh, we talked a little bit last meeting about the, the dam. I can send that, the report, I got that, where I found it, obviously, to me about the compromise dam, that you can see today, do you like that? Yeah, I'll send that out and, and uh, that might be something we need to get a grant for because uh. As, as they mentioned, that's uh, actually, Tim might know more about that, that, that dam problem, that the uh, that. Back leaked, but uh, we're gonna have to probably cut down some trees and, and, and do that.
One of the things Bill was just gonna say, so I, I, the.
Term that we've used for where the scare of the curtain wall and the curtain wall is centered from the dam and. I did, I had forgotten the term. Timmy, they remember that term. I did not remember that term, but. We, it was very complicated with the dam engineer when we had. That built and that part of it was able to be built because. It was separate. I'm guessing, Tim, is it still true that the core is okay with what's over there versus what's on the dam itself?
Correct.
So, so, and I guess that's one of the questions Bill wants to make from you is. Depending on where the trees are, the stuff on the curtain wall aren't typically okay, but the stuff on the dam, it's not. Right. This, I, I didn't think that changed. That's why I was wanting to be sure.
Well, they sent a real thorough report. Obviously, the council addressed this stuff, so I think we do need to. And they got kickers, no, they answered. But no, there's a lot of them, but I think we could be some of it. But I'll say, I'll say to everybody.
Yeah, that was the document um and we talked about that last.
Did you take a look at?
And that's what we saw. A lot of the vegetation that is almost, you know, magnets, and the dam have to be polluted. So, and and the report also contains that that first part of what we do in August this year. So.
You're on top. That's great. That's great. Yeah.
Well, I mean, nothing's been done.
Yeah.
So.
But things to do, but yeah, we might need a grant to do some of that stuff.
Well, yeah, but it's high and supposed to be the first part of it.
At least we started up. Uh the other thing, uh the park committee talked about was uh canal basin, where repairs and maintenance, and that's ongoing. And again, that's what I need some money to. And it seemed like this is the showcase place of the town and do you really need it? See if we could figure out how to, how to make it that and and with the, you know, the, the displays as well as the, the barrels and bathrooms and some of the. Some of that, but anyway, we talked about those, those things that can be done. And the last thing, and I, I mentioned, I sent something out today and I just kind of go over really quickly. Uh the uh Scottsville boat land. Um when we had our joint meeting with Alamo Marl. They mentioned the Scottsville book, all the things they did for Scottsville, you know, Dory Park and all this, and they talked about the Scottsville Boat Land. And so a friend of mine, for several people talking to me about. Why is it not called the Scottsville Boat Land? And uh it's just a public boat land. And so anyway, they, I talked to Alamo County about it. They, they contacted. And I contacted them and they gave me somebody from D dot. It's the same person that helped us get the, the signs on the street. And they said they could, they could, they could probably call it the Scottsville Boat Landing or put our, our, our name and logo on that. When they go to the boat landing. So um I sent that today to everybody, so you can look at that, but I. It might cost a little money to get that uh sign up. But I think it'd be, and they could get some directional signs too, maybe that would. If I could stop in the street and ask, and people say, where's the boat land?
Yeah, aren't you talking about, I mean, it's, it's not the county, it's the Department of Wildlife.
Be, yeah.
Funny how the county line comes through there.
That's where the signs would be from. They're the ones who's in control.
It's kind of, they, they coordinate with the, just like the. I think it's the, it's part of D dot. They, D dot does all the science. But what, is that who this is? Department of DWR, DWR, yeah, DWR does it, but they don't do the uh. Science. They just do the, they just manage. So it's kind of complicated. But anyway, uh. I, I sent it to, you know, and maybe we could look into doing that. It might cost some money to get that sign. Uh and those directional sign, but it sounds like they're willing to do that, so. I'll talk to the park committee about that too, too, the, what they think about it.
But Alamo County wouldn't make the sign.
It's not, in fact, they didn't even know it. At Alamo County, when I first, I talked to the park some person. And he thought that was county property. And then he looked at it and was like, he said it was DWR and uh.
Yes, all about land.
So he gave me the names and he gave me a name for somebody from D dot. That's why I contacted. And he, and it's connected with them. So anyways. There's a group of people that work together with that, but I think it'd be uh good if we could get that boat landing sign. So it'd connect us to the river, just um, you know, this is our Scottsville on the J Drew.
I know the one side of Alamo County did make a, about the schoolhouse, they spelled Scottville wrong, so.
But look at that.
It still spells off.
Do you have anything for us on anything?
Uh talked to the uh police chief about three times since the workshop. Um. And what, what we do is he, he just, he's gonna run down everything that's happened. I fact, I'll definitely. Twelve thirty this afternoon. So uh everything we talked about will, I'm sure the majority of it will be in the next workshop report. Um as far as the, the new town truck, uh still in Reno. Last I heard, they were waiting on um the radar to come in so they could install it and get it upfield. We're hoping for next week and certainly I hope we get it by August fifth for the. For the night out. So anyway, it's, it's coming. It's just, it's like everything goes a little slow.
I know what you mean.
That's all.
How's in the other thing, of course?
Uh no, the only thing with EPC is Jack said he's working on to my certain stuff with the uh. Local with Alamo County and some of the others around the county. That's about it. I mean, we haven't had a meeting or anything.
Mr. Whitley, anything for us?
Uh next big event, of course, is Friday. Uh hoping for some cooler weather than what I saw in the forecast.
They like today to do well.
Yeah, I think it's gonna be hotter in a black vinyl car seat Hades, but um. But the only thing I was gonna bring up, and I think Mr. Quick may have hit upon it, was the help that Jacqueline and Ben were requesting. So I think you're copied on email, so that's all settled. And and but otherwise, moving along with the successful events.
All right, thank you. Kathy, anything from Chamber?
Yeah.
Okay. And farmers market manager is about here. We've already talked to the treasurer and the events and the local scan is there. I'm going to insert something right here so Mr. Car does not have to waste any more time hanging around. If you could come up to the podium, I need to get your help with something. So. Um. I understand that the, there's a new generator in the pump house?
There is. Yeah, new generators installed in the gym.
All right. The problem was, the problem is that council approved it.
I'm here to say it out. It's approved and I hadn't had it done by the end of June.
Yeah, we hadn't gone, hadn't been before council. So I don't know who gave you that, but what I want council to consider doing. Tonight, I said we weren't voting on anything, but I think we need to. Maybe retroactively vote to approve this purchase because what just happened? Uh. It fifteen thousand dollars, ten was left over from last year. And you've blown your five thousand budget for this year. So you've got zero. Okay, and it's something probably they might have had some questions about. I know Bobby here talked about the need for a new generator, but it never came before council and. Procedure is to get like free bids and let the council nationalize just like this lawnmower thing.
Right, right.
So.
Which, which I had gotten all those bids and Bobby had all those.
Okay, well, you know, that, that.
Call we had been approved and.
It's probably, it probably is a lack of him getting it before council. I don't want to put the blame on him. I don't want to put the blame on anybody. But if it's, if it's okay with the town administrator and the council. Could we get a motion to retroactively approve the purchase of this uh generator?
Mr. Mayor, I so moved.
Second.
Can, can I make a comment though? Is this actually, it was a, so first of all. It's great if you did, but this actually gets into another thing that we didn't talk about here, which is. We do need to get that request to the county. I don't see that.
Touch on that before Tim.
You're gonna follow on that, so we. So Tim, we were just, we talked about last week, we, we do want your help. We're gonna write, ask the county for money, and this could be on there too.
Yeah.
We could say so at any rate.
So anyhow, we have a motion. Uh it's been seconded. Any further discussion?
And I want to say thank you too. You should be, you should be proactive. You have to go ahead. It wasn't going ahead of us. Don't wait for us to attack the town.
I was just curious, is this gonna be in this year's budget or was it last year?
It's three, two thirds of it is from last year's budget, one third of it is under this year's budget. That's, that's the way it's, it is, so it's not appropriating more than was already appropriate. It just split over two years. So would you call it, and no further discussion, I'll ask for a call for the vote.
Would this, is this gonna uh? This, this is not included with what we were talking about, the other stuff for the uh. Okay, I.
Yeah, I'm gonna address that after we get through this.
Okay.
Okay, so uh any further discussion? Call for the vote.
Alex Sett.
Yes.
Dan Ripso.
Yes.
Phil Heisen.
Yes.
Edward Payne.
Yes.
Laura Townsend.
Yes.
Roger Whitley.
Yes.
Okay. The other thing is with the other repairs to, well, I talked to Mike Pruitt on Saturday. He's gonna send a sort of an outline of how uh our town administrator should uh. Send to, and who she should send it to, to see how, because he promises to God he's gonna, gonna give us some money for this thing. So yeah, she's gonna get an email probably tomorrow with all that procedure and who to send the stuff to, what we need, so I'll keep you updated on that.
That'd be great.
Okay?
All right.
Thank you so much, Tim. Appreciate all you do.
Tim, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I can just take a pass comment. You all may or may not have heard, but uh ask supervisor Mike Pritz running for US Congress.
Yeah, I, the reason he called me Saturday to tell me this, so.
His and do his.
While I had him in. So I got him onto that.
Yes.
Yeah, he, he had already sent me that email, but he sent a copy of that email to uh Liz Booth, so she can get. Put down our wish list of what we need and all we needed and send, he would send it to.
Okay.
In the county.
Um to touch on what you said, you said he's running for US Congress. With that, with that being said. Oh, we as a town gonna have issues with him. Being more focused on other things than active. I mean, you know, I'm not to, not to bring anybody else's name up, but we had other people leave here. That they were gonna uh make it as transition smooth as possible, and they were absent for a month and a half.
One of the fans, counsel hang on this. There have been a few times over the years that he has had other. Town supervisor, who's wondering where they were, right?
And they were wondering where I was.
That, that's my question. If, if he had asked race and go to a different office, is he gonna still make himself available or do we need to? Uh do we need to push it uh harder or faster before he get too tied up into a campaign for high offer?
He and I keep in communication. Uh I, I don't classify him as a good friend, but he's a good acquaintance. And I don't mind calling him day or night if we need some. Uh. We'll just all have to monitor the situation, you know. I just can't imagine wanting to be a congressman for a district the size of Vermont. That, that, this.
Mr. Mayor, just remind him that you're from Holland and that your thumb is in the leather.
That's all right.
And you need some help.
All right, let's get this planning commission thing done. Um. Discuss it a lot, so I need a. Motion to appoint someone to make a.
Mr. Mayor, let me defer this to Mr. Penn. I don't wanna do this. So what would you, how do you want us to do this? I mean, we know what the planning commission said, so how would you like us to do this?
Well, um. We're taking action. We're not voting.
That's the same thing.
Is it? No?
We're voting.
So it doesn't say vote. Well, okay. Um. I don't, you know, I, I don't know. We've got two applicants, is all I know.
Well, we just need to get done, get them, get them presented.
Yeah, I, I wanna see it done too.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll, I'll go back and send the uh, the visionary code and the town policy that we talked about. But it's, it is confusing. We're going back to, you know, recommendations, but uh. I mean, I, I can't imagine anybody not going with Nancy Gill. She's got the, she's, she's on the A-list and she's getting group and. She's got experience and, you know. You know, I do, my, my concern is. What it, I'll, I'll talk about it later.
I do get your, I do get the objection here, and I don't think it's an objection to the candidate, but I think if council's gonna make. A transparent choice, we should at least see the list of candidates that are applied and take the recommendation along with that. But just show us the list of people to apply in the future. And I think that. Would, at least from what I've heard, make everybody happy. This is who planning commission recommends, and here is people apply.
That would be my question for uh Mr. Gritko.
Yeah, one of the applicant was Mr. Meeks.
Okay, so yeah, that's what I was just wondering, um if all the uh. I don't know who all the applicant for, but you just said Mr. Meeks was the other one. So um. You've been on the planning commission. Do you feel that it's best for? People in the planning commission, do y'all own little? Interview and do y'all just come up with one person or what? It, it sounds like some of the people on here would like to. Do it similar like we did for the administrative, just you have several people to choose from or whatever. I mean.
It's usually been a, a simple process. We, we make a recommend, I mean, the. The planning commission makes a rec- recommendation, not very complicated, and then we. Usually we have trouble filling positions, so that's usually the problem. So, you know, Bobby, I, I was just. I think Alex makes a good point, so the other person, Mr. Meeks. I, I would like to make a motion that we. Appoint Nancy Gill as the planning commissioner.
Okay, um. Discussion, I guess you understand.
Well, I'm gonna make a point too.
Yeah, and now we're. Free for all discussion.
Okay, you asked me, you know, what I, what I would do. Is there anything wrong with? The mayor asking the council. Does anyone have a recommendation? And someone may voice. One of the applicants, somebody might divorce the other. And he can say, okay, we have, you know, both of these applicants, call a name in any order you want. Uh. Do you recommend, vote to recommend, and then we can vote for all of them. Well, it's the same thing. I just, I just want, I want fairness.
Sure, I mean, I just wanna make a point too. So, you know. Uh you've al, you've already voted for the planning commission, so you basically have two votes. You have this vote. And you have the one for the planning commission. That's the idea of fairness that I was talking about. I'd still like to see if there's anybody can find any planning commission that picks their own members. That's even still like, that recommends finding one for the community and then I'll, I'll shut, shut up. I don't know if any small community picks their own members.
To be fair to them, they're not picking to recommendation.
Recommending, let me see, say it again. I don't think there's one community that recommends their own members.
I just, I think if we have a list of the people that apply.
And that's all we need.
And then instead of maybe we do roll for a vote, you just say the name of.
Right, and it should just be town council. There's, it's, now planning commission should say, I'll support it and give a recommendation, I think, but no, I don't think so. I just totally disagree.
Well, if we, we are bound by Robert's rules, there's been a motion to appoint Ms. Gill to the planning commission and it's been seconded. So unless somebody can find something in Robert's rules that says we can't go ahead with the vote, uh. We're gonna go ahead with the vote. Any other discussion?
I'd just like to point out again that this um. You know, that our town has. You know, should broaden their and expand their volunteers, you know, and, and we shouldn't ostracize people. And we shouldn't just have it in group all the time. We've had, the planning commission has gone through a lot of turnover and they've had several town counselors on there. And I just think, you know, we're telling people, you know, in no sense volunteering because you don't have the experience or you don't have, you know. And I just don't think it's diverse enough. And I think it's good to get somebody on there and just, you know, who hasn't been on anything. And, and try to include those people in there. And, but I, but I know. I've, but you know, I think Nancy Gill would be fine. She says she's got her hands in a lot of things, but and I do think she, maybe she'll get the uh comprehensive plan done.
So this is a simple question. So. This position is just uh appointing someone to the planning commission, right? That's not the, the person leading the.
No, that's up to them. That's up to them. They do the chair. They, they vote on the chair.
Okay, so. Any other discussion before the court calls for the vote? Other clerk?
What's Alex Sett?
Yes.
Dan Ripso.
Yes.
Phil Heisen. Edward Payne.
No.
Laura Townsend.
Yes.
Roger Whitley.
Yes.
Recommendation passes. For yes, to no.
And if I could say, my vote was not a vote against Nancy Gill, it was a vote against process. I know she'll do a fine, I know she'll do a fine job, but.
Yeah.
I think this could have been handled a little differently.
Alright, well, let's talk about bathrooms. Let's talk about bathrooms.
Speaking of.
Speaking of.
I'll wait my turn.
We've already covered another uh topic there.
Here's a bottle here, I mean, I checked, they're not that bad.
Can't get here, brother has other obligations, and Becca don't drive.
But I, one of the things we could do is, you know. We got paper, but Marina did for each child back then, they know, we got paper, but.
Do you hear where Charlie was here, where Charlie?
No.
Charlie lived in apartments in a wheelchair, leave a wheel down, open the bathrooms, and let's see, let's clean in, they close them up at night.
Is he a employee or a volunteer?
Volunteer.
But anyway, it's, it's something to consider when he goes on vacation, how to, how to take care of, just like, you know, grass cutting.
Alright, so any recommendations on bathroom procedures?
Well, we've got a maintenance man.
Yep. And if he's not cutting grass, he can clean bathrooms. Alright, so since he's not cutting grass, we want bathroom detail.
Yeah, I mean.
I do think that we all, like we did last year closing uh the, the fall and winter.
It has to be winter.
Yeah, so we got, so pipe home freeze, but that's what we, that's what not very long time.
Quarterly, it's one.
November to March, you know, or. I'll continue checking out, but I, I think uh, you're being taken care of, and there might be some problems.
So you, you're talking about closing winterizing, uh, I mean.
Yeah.
Common sense, I see kids playing down in playground year round. I mean, there's no automatic thing. And so, you know, and it's simple, the more you keep the bathroom open, the more it's gotta be maintained, and the more toilet paper stuff gets used.
Right.
One of the tennis courts is.
Right, so I just.
I think usually county closes theirs themselves, maybe they did, I think they do. But uh, just speaking of bathrooms, you know, technically, we should leave this bathroom over to open too, for the bulk of this, in this room, really. Because this is public space, I, I mean, I don't know, but I think it might be hard to monitor, but I know there's people public could come up there.
I was under the impression, public spaces, the hallway, this is the uh
No, that's a public.
This is chambers, it's open, we have meetings in here, but all other times to close. I mean, am I right along with that?
Bathroom's available for like, fourth of July, and other special events.
Special events though?
Yeah, but this, like Mr. Town says, there's a lot of stuff in here, you just want a lot of people walking in and out all day long.
That might be something we talked to town attorney about this, because I, I do think that if we have a public space.
It's not a public space, that's private.
It is.
Like there's private.
Are you talking about this first?
Yeah.
You were talking about the.
No, I'm talking about these here.
Well, these here, oh.
There's a bunch of strangers walking in your building all.
That door right there should be locked down today, if somebody needs to come in here, they should go through the front door. People down right there, nobody, in my opinion, nobody can be able to come up the steps and go right through here without someone here. I mean, this is considered a town chambers or whatever, so.
So if they wanted to, they, I would go to the office, say, you know, I need to help.
Stores, these doors are open, Stan has a, an event downstairs, we leave it open, so they, this is only.
But we do have equipment, you're, you've got to check that.
Couple thousand dollars sitting there on the table. And a bunch of stuff stored back there.
I don't wanna do that, you know, someone coming in here and pop back in the bathroom and, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why I think the door should be locked to it.
Alright.
Well, maybe we can check with you, what you were talking about earlier, them doing the renovations downstairs or whatever, the bathroom downstairs.
Mister Mayor.
Well, maybe you can make that.
Yeah, I wanna mention, follow up.
Make your bathroom downstairs more public, it's that's from that of the ones up here.
But they rent that, scan rents it, so it's up to them, really, well.
Well, it's their green room and everything when they have the events downstairs, so they can have public going through.
I mean, someone comes in to see the town ministerial, the town clerk, and they say, by the way, do you have a restroom? Just leave it up to your judgment, you can say yes or no. Of, you know, that's where I would.
Okay, do we need, do we need to talk about community service people assisting, other than we went up on a little volunteer talk we had earlier? On the, item number three, community service folks to assist with maintenance department, now, if there's something you wanna discuss.
About there was if we could get like the work, um, like if somebody needs community service, um.
And did you see my email?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, they were considering, y'all, some of you remember in the past, uh, Mr. Whitley lived here. When the discovery school was going, sometimes we get kids from the discovery school over here to clean up and cut bushes and rake, and pick up the trash. And sometimes we've had county work police people out here, but uh, so I asked, I said, we need to check with the chief and see if they're, and he knows of any programs. Where people need to work off some hours, I see some strange person picking up trash, I was like, is that, they said, at least you'll work on it. And he's working off some of our community service outlets.
Like the last way we headed here was actually driving the town truck.
Yeah, I think you're right.
I know I'm right.
Well, uh, let's just, let's just say we're exploring options for that. Alright, and we've already talked about the canal basis for.
Let me ask about that one, though, uh, Kevin's gonna do videos. So you're gonna, are you gonna do the, so you're gonna do the bathrooms too, or are we gonna get somebody from here, or volunteers to do the bathrooms? Because they all look really nice for that event, you, are you doing the bathrooms too, Kevin? No, so we need to get some.
I don't know, I, I don't really care, I don't even look at ours, can we tell?
But hey.
They're not in that shape, I checked them today.
Yeah, can I ask one question? Uh, the budget, and, and I don't wanna interrupt you, but the budget that you all took for the um, the five thousand that came from I guess the budget for the, the, the.
Canal basis for?
No, the pumps.
Oh, pumps.
The five thousand. Tim had texted and said, hey, was my entire budget five thousand, because you know, we may need diesel while we're pumping, so y'all just take all of this, okay, can you just say?
The five thousand was just for maintenance, yeah.
No, he was just concerned, okay.
Just for general, uh.
It was just for general maintenance, so had to use that to offset the.
No, he can stop it decent.
Yeah, he said it concerned, he didn't wanna not deal.
Not taking his diesel allowance.
You gotta run those pumps.
What he said.
Do we need to discuss canal basis square maintenance before, I think we hit that pretty hard somewhere. Uh, okay, Mr. Ritzko had something?
Yeah, I just wanted to follow up on what Spencer said, he did speak a concern, and I don't know, he was kind of in and out, but I'm thankful that as a council, we did not raise the tax this year, so we did not raise the tax, which is good, we did say, and that we would be willing to look at the budget again to see if there's any way we could save money, and I do think that's something we can do, as in the coming months, we can look at the budget to see are there ways, we do wanna not change our police, not change our paying, paying employees, but we, we've all, we have said, we are willing to see if we can tighten it, and at least to my understanding, we said that we would do that, and also it's really important, this appeal that we made to the county, and so I, I would we as a town would be supportive of the tavern, in our current budget, I don't see how we could lower it, I'm thinking we didn't raise it, you know, but.
And how many people up here, when they get ready to go out to dinner, do they think, first of all, I wonder how much it deals taxes?
Nobody thinks about that.
I, he does.
I do.
Way to fly this, and, you're right, uh, I think, I do think next work session, we should have a revenue discussion. And really do again, and not just a normal, like maybe even clear some stuff out, so we can have time to talk about it. The thing that we all are avoiding and have done a very good job avoiding for a long time is a property tax. If the economy turns up. I don't think we need it, but we're getting smaller and smaller surpluses every year. I don't want to do it, and I don't think that should be the point of this discussion, but it is the elephant that we're in. But I, I would like to talk about the meals tax and maybe revenue generation, so.
But I was gonna ask, like, when you validate between now and the session, hopefully we'll finished up with this audit stuff, and she has to get together, maybe you could just make a little chart of how much six and a half is generating now, how much six would generate, how much five and a half would generate.
Yeah.
Scale and look at, because it's hard to, it's hard to realize in your head, you know, if six percent.
Was it fifty-one thousand?
You know.
It's twenty-six thousand, every half percent.
Seven, six, seven, five, we baited down instead of fifty-one thousand dollars.
You know, and he was saying Buckingham County is not gonna charge the meals tax, they do have meals tax.
Well, here's the thing, you know, that's obviously affecting our businesses and, and I don't think it would be the thing that changes, you know, with the problems you're looking at, but I do think of our businesses are talking to us about.
Buckingham doesn't have a business license tax.
Yeah, but you know.
I think the biggest, I think one of the biggest challenges we have right now is Alamo, Alamo County taxing system, they're putting the hurtin' on us, they're making out good on us, and we're not getting anything from it.
Talking a little bit. Are we able to levy a tax without Alamo County?
According to Jim, our attorney, um, we can, he's, let's talk about the pennyback tax.
Yeah.
On, um, on the existing taxes, I mean, I
Yeah.
I do, I have been running this because I'm wanna figure out what's going on, but you were just talking about Charlottesville. They receive, this is a, um, they receive sixteen million annually from Alamo County, Scottsville receives twenty thousand three hundred, and then, um.
That's that whole revenue sharing.
Seeps ninety-nine point eight seven percent of the total payments that we give them, and Scottsville receives zero point one three of the total payments. And then another, the last thing I'll say, well, not really, but Scottsville receives seven hundred and eighty-eight times more money than Scottsville does.
But that, that information can be helpful when we're at, when we're making, when we're appealing, like now, we're making a little levy, that's the starting, I'm for sure, those are, those are good reminders. But you know, hold back. You know, finding, we've been talking about trying to get more revenue for, for a long time, and meal stack is our biggest revenue source, but you know, looking at the economy that is, we're, we're on our own, we're not gonna get anything from the federal government, nothing from the state, nothing from the county. So we, we have to find ways to get money, or maybe we have to.
If, if I may, I just, you know, going back to uh, Mayor was talking about uh, Spen- Spencer, Spencer, what is it? He did reference that he made more money in the past, I agree, um, but another thing y'all need to keep in mind, is business is not the same for him. He used to get most of his business from uh motorcycle group that came through on weekend, and he put a stop to that, and he pretty much cut his business almost in half by that, because there was a little incident with some people arguing or whatever. So again, that is local, local businesses cutting their own customers off. I mean, the way I look at it, if you got two hundred motorcycles, wanna come here, and, uh, let them come in, and bring them money in. But if you sit there and start giving them rules, say, yeah, we can't have this and that, not only they're hurting the business, but they're also hurting the other businesses in town also.
Also.
At the ga- at the gas station, you know, getting gas and whatever, if you make it where they can't come here, they're just gonna keep on going.
It's, it's hard for restaurants to get servers, and if you don't have good service, you don't wanna go to restaurants.
And food prices have gone up like we ever knew.
Yeah, right, I mean, we pay.
Not, 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 not to perish, we're all talking about, you know, what they order, what they get in all the trucks.
Eighteen dollars for B R two sandwiches.
You're right. Funny, I stopped eating.
Did you talk about?
Well, no, I haven't talked, I did today, I talked to him, because I didn't have this right, uh, but I, he's, he is, he has a U P. He doesn't do it himself now, he's part of a, a, a larger company. Um, so I need to, he works with them, and I'll try to contact them.
Have they been buying the levy?
Yeah, it, it doesn't seem like they did.
No, because I haven't got a bill since like, month, right? That was it, and then they haven't been back.
Yeah, I'll have to ask him about this, it looks like needs more, but they still more, I, but maybe that's often, but I, I'll try to get a, I'll try to get a, yeah. So you want him to, to do it to?
Yes, tell him what we need, and tell him, give us written, so we'll have to sign on.
Three and a half acres of grass, is that?
Three and a half acres total.
Oh.
Yeah. It's not much. I think he does really good. He does a thorough job. Yeah.
Let's move on, tell us about uh, town administrator, tell us about virtual meeting security policy and public notification procedures.
Um, well, as mentioned last uh week. This stems from the county municipal meeting that we're in, that three dot tie jazz. Uh, some various people, anyway, so did that, um, proposed a, um, a new policy that would uh, help prevent that from happening in a meeting. Um, generally, that people would, they wanted to call in, and they would have to wait in this virtual waiting room, and we would let them in, you can see their name and phone number, um, things like that. And not, um, different things I read, we're recommending not put their numbers and all that stuff out there on public uh website. And then people could um send a text message, or send an email and request a sign on, we can um provide that information. So that is somewhere in.
Now, to implement that on the website, where they would have to send an email, if they would have to send it to?
Um, I would say that, yeah, we have to do that. And then, you know, people can still um comment publicly if they want in person attendance. Um, but we're gonna be more of a moderator, and um, that event that happened, apparently it was from somebody attaching to someone else that was um either utilizing a VPN or not using the VPN, but they were overseas, so it allowed, I guess, people to get on there. Um, I think I have heard that it's happened here locally, um, so I would not want that to happen, you know, to us.
Okay, anything to make it safer?
And can we, uh, go back to the groundskeeping and quickly?
Yes, sir.
I, I don't, we need to have a backup plan, because this might not happen with them, and this seems like the town should have a backup model, or or even a, a basic one to begin, and, and, but at least we're you know, even if we got ten, he's not gonna start next week, he's not gonna start two weeks for, for that company, unless we uh, we agree to hire somebody to do this to the next, whether it's Tim or somebody else, but I think we, we, we're kind of avoiding or not uh completing maintenance of the town, if we're just saying, well, we're gonna hire somebody, and if you don't even have, you know.
You wanna, you aren't taking upon yourself to find somebody that is willing to.
Uh, subscribe, but I, I, but I, I do think we, we might need to have a, a small law or somewhere.
You know.
I don't think you could do it with a hand, but he couldn't do that with a hand, I mean, I mean, did he do a couple of them, he could probably do canal, he could probably do the farmers market hand, and Bruce Park, but the other two.
We could rip Mr. Creep's law.
Yeah, I was gonna say, let me, let me make a recommendation, maybe there's a young person around here who's had experience cutting grass, and maybe his.
who's had experience cutting grass, and maybe his dad is here tonight. So, so you might wanna talk to Mr. Quigs, there's, uh, your, your son may be a possibility.
If he's interested, we could contract with him for the rest of the summer.
Yeah, that is, fine, he said, and he, so they indicated when I put him on the spot, that he, well, yeah, I mean, that's terrible.
When does he, uh, when does he go back to school?
I guess, I, I, my point comes down to, you know, and, and forgive me, some of you all have been here, but for like, the whole reason I got on government services three years ago was for the maintenance. And it, I, into a lot of me, he's trying to get this, no, so it's right in my wheelhouse as far as, and I didn't care. And I don't care that we have a maintenance person if they're doing it, but, but it doesn't look like, in my, I guess my question is, is, the maintenance not get done to the satisfaction of you all with us? Okay, so the idea is to do something else. Yeah, I can talk to him and, and I now see what he would do. Yeah, if it's okay, we don't have a company, is it, I mean.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, so Bill, I think.
I can send you the post that Tim fires, if you already have them.
You know, I, I just, hypothetically here, I'm waiting to buy the mower as wise.
Yeah.
We decided to contract this out, and he can buy the thing, we don't want to spend money.
Right, but I, I like the idea, because I don't think, he's broke the line, I think firing his company, he might have to start for two months. But, uh, I think they would do well, but he's, they got a lot of business, and so, but anyway, yeah.
I wouldn't take anything away from him, but no, I think that if we're trying to be as good as we possible can, as far as, if we're not gonna do the maintenance, not getting a mower, then potentially, start that next year, or even hook it before, but, you know, I can tell you this, what Jan was saying was the mower that he had was insufficient, and more, getting a decent mower is not cheap. So, I mean, if we're on that route, you know, they're expensive, so, you know, I, I think if we're, we're in July, you only have about three more months.
Yeah, I had, I'm gonna say this, I've heard a quick answer, that's the quick answer.
Yeah, so, uh.
Give us a quote, allow us to use the quotes that Tim gives.
If you give us some quotes, we can say, okay, we got fifty-six hundred dollars for a lawnmower that we can get loads, or am I gonna pay three thousand dollars to pump it out? Well, if you're gonna pay three thousand dollars, you might as well go buy the new mower.
If you're not gonna take care of the new mower, like you took care of the old mower, you, you, you know, when, 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 when that maintenance man came here, we had two trucks, we don't have either one of them now, we had a lawnmower, we had a weedy, they're all broken. When I was a kid, if I wanted a new toy, I broke my old one, so I'd get a new one.
Still with it? Um, I, I do wanna ask the, uh, Geraton mower we have now, is it a Snapper Pro Geraton? Cause I went up there, I went up there today, and once you, when you trying to go in there, there's a Geraton mower sitting right there, if you look hard enough, you can see it from the road, it's nowhere near where the shed is.
Yeah, it broke down, and he just left it.
Well, even, uh, well, it, it, it need to be moved away, I mean, where it sat now, if the man could pull in there with the trailer, boom, it'd be gone. Under five minutes, real easy, so we need to get it moved. We need to get the, uh, mower moved to a.
Thank you, and I think, uh, I think Jan would still do the Bruce, Bruce Park, because that's small, that's like a yard, but the other ones, the big ones, we, we'll get, he gets three quotes for each, each one of those, uh, yards, huh?
And that was.
That was for the vacuum nature area and the farm's one.
It's a lovely woman.
Do you know what he's done?
And I'll show you what the, Tim.
The town administrator has the.
The lower part, the metal part.
Town administrator has the authority to hire anyone on a part-time basis. So y'all work something out.
Yeah, I'll work with you two guys.
Yeah.
It'll be great.
I think we're talking about both parking tonight on the. And tell us about the V-Dell we're at.
Will, so you don't grant, you tried to apply for it last year, but we discovered the long run that we had to go through Alamo County, as a, um, passover for any grants that go through state or federal. So since we have learned this, we forgot, we, I think we have to measure and apply for it again, with all the information we tried to apply for last year, and it goes out October first. And for buyers, remember, it doesn't cover anything besides infrastructure, which is not, what we have to do with the levy. But, it doesn't cover, what? It doesn't cover the levy.
Nothing, but we're talking about pump house, well, that's what.
Yeah.
It won't cover the pump house?
It only covers certain things, but not actual mitigation, what we have to have for the rate, for, for, less mitigation.
So that, so this grant will work?
That will work, so like, um, homeless groups, stuff, like security cameras, updating like infrastructure, like security.
Okay, anything else anyone has related to the agenda items we've talked about? If not, thank you all, and a motion to adjourn. Second, second, on my favor.